Twenty-five, can I get a roll call?
Absolutely. Acting Chair Hernandez May.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel.
Here.
Oh, Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Lassen.
What did you say?
Say, I called your name.
Oh, I didn't hear it.
I'm sorry.
What? Here.
And I did get excused absences from both Bravo and Ellsworth.
Thank you, and thanks for not leaving me behind there. Plaque salute, everyone.
Plaque of DJ.
Plaque of the flag.
To the Republic. One nation. Invisible liberty, justice.
No. Does anyone have corrections, additions or modifications to the minutes? Has everyone gotten a chance to look at them? We're expecting anyone?
What is that? Never heard that phone before.
Okay.
Sounds like a mistake.
All right, nobody else had canceled tonight? All right, minutes, does anyone? All right, in that case, we could take a motion.
I move, we accept the minutes as written.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Yay, all right, so any business from the audience? I don't think I see anyone online either.
I do not, I haven't received anything.
Okay, and then communications from staff?
None.
So today's meeting is a work session in which staff will provide the commission with updates regarding proposed revisions to the Woodburn Transportation System Plan, TSP. No testimonies being taken today, no decision will be made at today's hearing, and no action is required by the commission, so. We have a presentation.
Appreciate it. Just to remind, it's just a work session, these are very informal. Feel free to interrupt, you know, I don't have a long discussion. I'm generally going to go through some what a transportation system plan is very briefly, what this update was about, because we started a long time ago, and some of you weren't even on the commission when we did it. And I'm going to give some highlights as to where we're at. And what I'm really doing is I'm giving you a sort of a sneak peek at the most recent, and it's about ninety-eight percent finished draft of the TSP update that we've been working on. The plan is ultimately after bringing it back to you, probably thirty days, maybe forty-five, probably more like forty-five days out. For a formal public hearing, we'll take testimony, you can vote on it, and we'll spend more time on it. Hopefully I'll have our consultant here for that.
Weird question.
Absolutely.
It seems, I guess it kind of surprises me that the land use planning folks have to approve the transportation, that seems more like a city council or a county thing, is it just, does everybody have to do that, like it's us plus them?
No, it's a good, good question. So this slide might help a little bit. So, again, this is just a work session, but this TSP, this Transportation System Plan, is a requirement of our comprehensive plan. This comes right from the state, right, so the state tells every single city and every county that they have to adopt a comprehensive plan, and in that comprehensive plan it has to have all of these elements, plus even more, I just couldn't fit anymore on the slide. The Transportation System Plan is a really important one. It's the one that has a lot of impact on people, and in every city and in every county, if in order for the city to modify or approve any of these plans, or make any modifications to the comprehensive plan, they actually have to come to what they call their local planning associate, local planning authority, which in this case is our planning commission, most places it's the planning commission. So they have to do that, they have to have a hearing, there's a special notice that goes out for it, and you have to provide a recommendation to the city council before they can adopt it. And that's one of those sort of extra organ steps for citizen engagement to make sure that everyone's aware of what's going on.
And I want to say we've had the parks and rec present.
Yeah, I think you've transit, I mean, since I've been here, I did the last Transportation System Plan in twenty nineteen. So we're updating these all the time, we recently did parks and rec transit, we're working on water and wastewater right now, and all those will come to you. And they are important, I mean, they are critically important in terms of land use planning and the decisions that we make. Long-term plans, I wish people had a better understanding of them, because I think they believe the public, I understand it, that these decisions that we make when an application walks in the door are sort of made in the dark or on the fly, and that's not the case. Just, and I wasn't going to spend any more time on, but that's the purpose of that Transportation System Plan. That plan, just a little refresher on what it looks like when you get into it, I gave you a copy that, when you're looking at the one that I, that you had, that's the, what, fifty-page document or so, it's in kind of easy-to-read English, I have about four four-inch three-ring binders with all the data and analysis that go behind this, and we're creating a very, an abridged one for the current update that we're working on. So there's a lot of background data that technically doesn't get adopted into the comprehensive plan, but it's what sort of informs and feeds all this. The biggest parts, okay?
Question, is that, is that available for anyone that comes in and?
Oh, yeah, all, all these plans are available online.
The data that?
If they wanted to look, even the data is online, but if they wanted to look, I only have one copy. Yeah. Believe me, I've worked in cities where people want to see every single detail, like the Water Master Plan, because that that makes a determination as to whether or not the city has to spend, has to increase rates because we need a new, we got to dig a new well somewhere, or if we have to upgrade our wastewater system. Down the line, people are going to pay for those improvements, and people want to know, make sure the city isn't fudging numbers, or making a mistake, which is more likely. We're not that smart, but mistakes we make. So in that Transportation System Plan, and it includes, everyone thinks of it just in terms of vehicles and traffic, but it's far more than that, right? It even includes a freight plan, a transit plan, a pedestrian plan, a bicycle plan, it's all these different modes of transportation. And they're all detailed in there, it's sort of set off with sort of your overall mission, what's the most important thing for us? And the question about these partnerships is really important, Commissioner, which is this idea of, you've heard me say this before, that most of the transportation issues in this community are on the state facilities that run through town, that we have zero control over. And I might be a broken record when I say, but it's really important to understand, and it's a big part of this. So we've been working, so on this Transportation System Plan update that we're doing, and this is, I'm calling this a surgical revision, and that's really important to understand, this is not a rewrite of that TSP, that's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar exercise, that we do not have the money for, we're not looking to do. And it's hard for us to wiggle that line to make a change before the state or ODOT or someone says, oh, that's too much, you're not looking at enough, so we've been walking that fine line.
What would trigger?
That's a good question, I don't think there's an exact number that triggers it. I think we need to have a justification for why we're not changing every page of that book, as opposed to what's so unique and has changed that you do need to make immediate changes now, and we'll talk about what those are, you know what they are. Our community is building like gangbusters, and we need that accommodated in our TSP. The biggest area where we're under most concern is that Southwest Corridor, and we just expanded our UGB to add two-hundred-and-forty acres out, two-hundred-and-sixty acres out there, and I'll let you in on a secret, we don't have any Transportation System Plan for that, or master plan for that in those other areas, and I'll explain why in a minute. But what that, what this plan does is, it sort of outlines all the, the sort of long-term twenty-year plan for what kind of road segments we're going to have, what those road classifications are going to be, where the connections are going to happen, what kind of improvements have to happen at intersections. It's broad and it's general, right, it's not exact. And this information is absolutely critical, because it, on my current planning end, I need this when applicants come in, and I can explain how it's going to, how how their development fits into this, and if there's improvements that are required, that we tend to put in as conditions or exactions, this plan and its adoption as part of our comprehensive plan is what gives us the authority within the, within means, right, I can't ask for someone to build a new freeway interchange, that's not going to happen. But within the limitations under the law, I can require these improvements, and we know what improvements are going to be coming down the line. And then they do a comprehensive transportation impact analysis for each project that comes in, based on this plan. Just kind of in general, so keeping this up to date, especially in areas where it's working, is really critical, so it was really worth it to us to go spend some money and do that. We were fortunate enough that part of this plan, this update that we're working on was funded through Business Oregon, they gave us, I think, a hundred thousand dollars to work on this, and that's because we're adding our UGB in the southwest corner, and Business Oregon is very interested in making sure that that area is planned appropriately, we can provide infrastructure to get good jobs here in that new urban, that new UGB area, which is of course all industrial land, that's the only way it'll come in, so we don't have a way to serve that. Fun fact, up until a few years ago, in Oregon, cities weren't allowed to look beyond their UGB for planning. So we, of course, are required to plan, I say twenty years, we actually look even further for a TSP, we got thirty-five years, and like in the metro area, they go out even further, as you should. You should be looking that far out if you're going to be building a new freeway interchange, and what impacts it has. However, the law said, and the statute read, that cities were not allowed to master plan one inch outside their UGB. And then it's because there was a fear from environmental groups and farmers that cities were secretly planning to annex areas and grab things outside. Which in the end is really stupid, because once you do UGB expansion, you say, well, I have no idea how we're going to plan for that or what impacts it'll have, which is really kind of stupid. That's changed, that's not in effect anymore, but that's the real impetus for why we're doing this change. Enough development down there, we have some failing issues out there that I'll talk about in a second, so just to give you an example, this page is from the current TSP, I'm just giving you one roadway plan element with particular improvements at interchanges, and some of the road segments that are called out, so like this R-27 is a huge road segment and one improvement. Where you see a dot, that's where sort of an intersection is called out to be addressed. And then we do very complicated modeling, I say we engineer smarter than me, do complicated modeling to determine what the long-term impacts are in each of these various intersections. The ones that are shown on these plans are ones that the previous Transportation System Plan identified as needing some improvements or needing to be added. And then the future models assume that they're done. And this is really important, so it says, when someone's going to look to develop, so take the Amazon sites, an easy one out here. When Amazon walked in the door, I had this plan approved, and it showed improvements on Butteville Road, this big blue line. It said we have a massive improvement that needs to be made at the corner of Butteville and two-nineteen. There was also at the time a stub to connect woodland all the way through, because years ago, you might remember this, Chris, the original plan, plans that were sketched up for developing that Amazon site, long before Amazon was there, before it was even in the city, was for this road to cut through, and this was going to be sort of an industrial park with a lot of roads cut through. Of course, that was a great idea, flash ahead ten years, someone buys it, it's one massive facility, there's no reason whatsoever to have it cut through. They changed the plan to give up with something different, that's perfectly acceptable, it's a general plan. But we need to have these pieces taken off, right, this is current, like that R-one is a huge infrastructure project that's included in our TSP, and at the end of this, I'm going to take probably sixty seconds to talk about transportation funding, because I want to explain really how this TSP works into how the city pays for these improvements. So as an example, keeping these projects on our list, like this woodland extension, we make assumptions when we come up with, say, our our system development charges, that all these projects are on a big list, and they have a cost estimate, and we have to come up with a way to pay for it by law. Even though we're not paying for them entirely, development tends to pay for the vast majority, we get grants for others, system development charges pay for them, we use other means to get there, we use our renewal dollars to get there, sometimes we use our gas tax, if it's a the haze improvement and things like that that we did on the street, I think that was all just general fund, that was a payment made by the taxpayers. So you have to reach into all these pockets, so it's important this be up to date. So obviously making edits and corrections from, you know, everything from all the Smith that's been developed needs to be taken off this list. Now we need to move forward and figure out what other changes have to happen, those are what we're going to find in these edits. As an example, I talked about it, but this is what, this table that you see throughout the TSP aligns to, there's the project, R-27, I don't know where it is now, it's this one, this blue one, R-26, sorry. That stub road ultimately to connect down to Par Road, right, it's happened, not entirely, it's about three-quarters done, still have to finish the west side of Stub Road. So not all that, all those improvements are done, but the vast majority of it's finished. So that was approved before, it was estimated to be about a two-million-dollar project, and the details are of it, are found in that deep data and analysis I have. So those are the kind of things that we went in and have been looking to modify. I think I covered the rationale and the reason for why we're doing it. We are trying to stay just in this area, don't get me wrong, I could go forever and change page after page and look at transit and say, the Mill Creek Trail Plan is different, and those are different plans, they're in a transit plan, we've got a Trailmaster Plan, we've got a Parks Master Plan, all these are slightly unrelated, these are things we want to get to now. That's why this is a surgical revision, I say that, not for you, I think you understand it, because I'm trying desperately trying to get this through. By the way, this has taken me almost two years since I kicked it off, which is woefully long. I say me, the reason's very simple, ODOT, God bless them, it's not, not blaming ODOT for it, but in order to do this very complex modeling, where they look at things like, they say twenty years from now, how much background traffic is going to be pouring in because of development in Silverton or Hubbard or McMinnville or Newburgh or Salem, how many more trucks are going to be traveling on I-5? Five years, twenty years out, and then they have to look at all the development happening in here, and what kind of employment they're going to have, and are people going to be traveling different directions, and it's very complicated, and they run these these models, and they're only accepted and run by ODOT, ODOT actually has the model, it's called T-PAL, that's what it's called. And every city that wants to do any analysis, even a contractor, when they do it, they have to go request it from ODOT and pay the money. We were just on a long, long waiting list to get our, our modeling done, it's really that simple, that's been the holdup. Kind of regrettable, slows us down, but this is government. So again, we're sticking in this area ninety-nine percent of what we're working on here, we're trying not to go beyond it. And I want to talk a little bit about sort of within the plan, that document that you got, it's written in a pretty easy strikeout underline format to show every change, that's why it looks a little awkward, but we want to be able to really transparent about what happened in there. I'm not going to read this, just a summary as to why we're doing this update now, moving forward in it, and I do want to focus on some of these, the process that we used to get here. I jumped ahead a little bit, but I think reading this, these steps are what I want you to sort of understand, and then we're going to spend not five minutes going through the alternatives, and I'll show you the, the final products. So going through this update, and this, by the way, all these requirements are stipulated by state statute, right, they've been adopted through administrative rules, they're all under Goal Twelve. State's been doing these since, I think Goal Twelve was in, probably started in the early seventies, it was an early one to to throw in there with a lot of statutes and requirements. Transportation and land use planning are intimately related, and Oregon does a great job of making sure that we look at both at the same time. It also means a lot of process, like this. So the only way you can modify it is to go through these exact step that we, that I'm, I'm giving overview of, I'm not getting detail of. So first you have to go through, and they do this modeling, I talked about, about future conditions under different scenarios, and then it'll pop up on their screen where you have, I talk about level of service, everyone know what I'm talking about when I talk about level of service requirements we have in all of our master plans, happy to take a second to kind of walk into it, because it gets thrown around a lot for site plan approvals and design reviews. All of our master plans, whether it's water, wastewater, parks, and transportation, are, what we do is we establish what we consider, and this is a local jurisdiction gets to make this consideration, what level of service do you want to provide for parks, right, how many, and it's usually per person, to keep it simple. But parks is a lot more detailed, they say, well, we want to have X acres of park per person of a neighborhood park. And this is a community park or a regional park, because there's different needs. And then maybe you put them in different areas, and maybe breaking into subareas, so that each one, each community, pre-building community have access to the various types of parks. Those very specific, those LOSs you hear us talk about all the time, those levels of service are where we sort of identify where we have needs. So where we find a deficiency is where the level of service standard is not being met. That leads to the Parkmaster Plan being redone with the specific parks, we do the same thing for transportation. We've got level of service standards for segments of roadway, right? Roadway might be, usually that's about how many lanes are in there, whether it needs right turn, right turn lanes included coming into an intersection, pre-flowing left turn lane down the middle or not, comedians handle it, does need pockets, that. But more importantly, where it's most important is at intersections, where we do these very specific level of service requirements, they're called VC, vehicle capacity, it's not really, they don't call it level of service anymore, but it, that's what it is. And it's done on a peak hour rate. I'm only mentioning that, I know I'm getting a little sideways, but I think it's a good thing to understand a little bit. All, every time we come in and talk transportation and traffic, we, you're going to hear people talk about it's a failing intersection or it's not, right, they're saying because the city, this city has established, and by the, ODOT has their own standards for their facilities. The county has them for theirs, remember, a lot of these facilities run through our community. So they're not the same.
Who gets to decide peak time?
Good, we do, actually, so what we call this, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, peak time is actually a real number, it's where the most amount of traffic goes through that intersection during whatever hour of the day. So it's not always like five to six, or four to five, sometimes it's five-thirty to six-thirty. In fact, here's a fun fact, this whole stupid fun facts. I've been doing this forever, right, and trust me, the peak time is always the same, it's always, it's always either like four to five or five to six at some major intersection, and it's always the same throughout the city. So when we look at, what we do is we'd say, what's the worst peak hour at the worst hour of the day at traffic, and then they say, it's not as simple as how many cars are going through, it's how long they wait for a light, how many are moving right, left, it's a little more complicated, but it's really that simple, and it gets a letter, A, B, C, D, E, full stop, and the city says, we don't want any Es, we don't want any As, right, if it's an A, it means you overbuilt that thing, you spent way too much money, and it's a colossal waste of taxpayer time, right, that's the last thing you want, and an E means that it's not meeting the, the standard we want, like in a in the general sense, it means you have to wait like more than one light signal section, I was figuring out what that phrase is. Then that's, that's failing, right, for a turn lane, and for traffic going through, if it's getting backed up at peak hour, it might fail to eat.
Question.
Yeah.
Because we do have state, county, and local. Are, are there any moments or are there any spaces in which those don't necessarily agree with each other, I guess?
It, it's very rare, but there are. And it has less to do with should I have said, should I have a traffic engineer next to me? It has, it doesn't have to do with what the peak hour is, right, and it actually has a little bit less to do with the VC, it's how they measure the traffic that goes through. ODOT's sole purpose is to move traffic, particularly truck traffic, on their facility. That's their job, they're the state highway system. Their job is to move lots and lots of traffic through Woodburn to get to their intersection, to get them on I-5, to move them through. The city does not have those exact same goals, right, we care a lot more about safety, we care a lot more about what it means to serve our community. That blindedness sometimes leads to disagreements we have, it's usually about sort of left turn lanes and, and a specific, a specific move on, on an intersection, they're usually very close.
Lights, because that'll slow down.
Right, and then how they're coordinated is, it's
That helps, though, that's
But transportation, it, it's really complicated, like the modeling is very complicated, and you'll hear me say it is far more art than science. That being said, they generally do a pretty good job, I'm usually like, yeah, you know, I look at Chick-fil-A and I'm like, yeah, it's kind of working well, I don't see traffic backing up out of Chick-fil-A, I don't see traffic backing up out of Amazon, they have two thousand people there. I don't know, but I've been there for rush hour, we had people go out occasionally at the rush hour, oh, my fun fact, this was mine, this never happens since I've worked anywhere. One project moved the peak hour on the entire system, that was Amazon. So Amazon, because they have like a thirty-minute changeover for two-thousand-four-hundred workers or something, that just go and then during that thirty or forty-five minutes, everybody comes in and out, that's a ton of traffic at one time, and it happens to roll over just outside the peak, so the, remember, the peak hour isn't like your peak hour, right, breakfast diner, it's the peak hour on the system, they actually moved the entire system peak hour a little bit in one direction, it's very strange, I've never seen that before, so, whatever, just, just interesting if nothing else. But that's what that modeling does at this high-long-term level. It still does the same thing, we run the models to identify a deficiency, and it'll say things like, hey, we're still finding a problem at intersection Y. And then it says, here's how you should probably fix it, and we put cost to it. Broad estimated cost. So we run alternatives, I want to spend a minute talking about those alternatives, because that was what we spent a lot of time on. Where you say, if we do this, then what happens, and those get plugged back into the model. If we take Par Road and leave it in its current configuration, what's that mean twenty years from now? If we build this south arterial, we're going to talk about this dream road that goes along the south end of town, it's going to happen, going to happen, what will that really, what impacts will that have on the entire area? Because it changes everything, right, water, I think of traffic like water, right, you open a valve over here, it starts flooding in, close it, they're going in different, they're stopping, they're not staying home, they're going to take a different road to get out of there. And that's what this modeling does, and I know it, it really does a pretty good job overall, I'm always pretty surprised. Well, I'm going to talk about those alternatives, so it goes through, it identifies deficiencies, where do you have capacity issues, and what kind of solutions are there? Cost estimates on them. And from there, this is where I'm going to spend sixty seconds again, I want to kind of explain what it means to, once the TSP is done and I have that nice project list, these are the things we need to do, the city council takes those and turns them into a capital improvement project list, right, and then we can collect SDCs to pay for that. So this ultimately leads to collecting dollars to pay for the improvements shown in it. And if it's not in here, we can't, and that's a good thing to know. Another reason why we got to keep it fresh. We have to stay on top of it. So let me talk about the alternatives, and I'm just going to be looking in the southwest area. Shows four of them, it shows kind of a no build, don't pay, don't pay, pay attention to no build, that engineers have to do that for like a bottom, bottom baseline, right? We start with, what does it mean to realign PAR and show the improvements you see down here? So most of what you see here is currently in our TSP, this south arterial is already shown in the TSP, it's shown as coming up and sweeping up to this point. This is, if I'm following my arrow, Par Road comes like this today, does the sweep south, does the sweep to the west, comes in and connects at this hazardous intersection. We already have in place in mind a requirement to do a couple of things, A, we need to do things like fix, add this roundabout to the TSP, because that's what really exists. This segment of roadway hasn't been finished yet, that needs to be added, we've got to take out this segment because Amazon already finished these pieces. We need to do a few extra pieces like, I'll, I'll talk about, well, in a minute. We need to fix Par and Butteville Road, we're putting in some safety improvements, I can talk about it at another meeting, they're coming along about how we're going to fix it, so all those are included, included in this sort of first realigned PAR, this is a pretty bare minimum improvements, doesn't do much for the industrial area, right? I pretty much said this will be a local street that'll somehow feed down here, but it doesn't really help move traffic through town or get anybody around. That's one model they did, the next mo, just as part of that, if you're curious, if you guys, when you get your TIA's and you ever want to read them, these aren't super complicated to understand, to be honest with you, because I can get them. This graphic is showing just what I showed you up above, right, sort of a short-term, medium fix here, some fixes up here, the arterial coming up to where our UGB is and turning up, that's what it looks like today in our, in our UGB. These numbers down here, look at, say, let's look at, say, ten, here's Settlemire and Par Road.
What's the roads and lanes?
What's that?
Are they the roads and lanes?
Yeah, exactly, so here it is, so it says, under this model, this model where we realign PAR, they plugged in all their numbers, right, and they look at peak hour, that's what we're looking at, because we only really care about peak hour. I don't actually agree with that, I think that's a weird way to do traffic, I would not look at traffic as the worst sixty minutes of my day, but that's all right. The community decided peak hour is the most important thing to look at, so we develop our system for the worst hour of the worst day, of the five days of the week. So look, if you look at ten, it's just what you think it is, I didn't zoom in too much, I'm sorry. Basically it's saying, there's four cars during the peak hour that make a right, they'd be coming off down, out of downtown, making a right to go north on Settlemire, right, through traffic is a hundred and ninety-seven trips go through. Left turns, let's say, coming eastbound on Par Road, seventy-two cars make a left turn up there. But what's most important is you're going to look at this LOC C you see in the center. That means that at peak hour, that intersection is working, that's about where you want an intersection to work, it's a C, there's cars there, it's pretty busy, but it's built correctly, and when they put And when they put out their tubes and they measure it, it's basically operating the way it should.
That's our rating?
What's that?
The rating for each that you mentioned from A through E.
You're right, A through, A through E, right? So if you look, I can jump ahead. I can tell you right now where you're going to see.
Number nine.
You're going to see nine, you're going to see nine, seven, six and five on Evergreen, right? These are our existing failing troublesome intersections, right? They are very problematic. One of them is ODOT's intersection. And Deb lives right, I'm trying, right about where there's somewhere in this, maybe a little lower.
There's traffic. It's great, great.
So, and that's what it shows. So if you read in here, you'll see it's level of service E, say on seven. It's a D on six. And again, and this is, by the way, this is with the improvements I'm showing here. This is with Stacy Allison ultimately connecting down to Par Road. But it also assumes development of lots, not all, we don't assume a complete buildup, but most of these places being built out. Commercial areas being built, that spec parcel being done, having industrial users in there, et cetera. So it puts them into the model, feeds them. Based on this information, we sort of make these overall decisions and that's what this TSP process is about. So that's one model. That's where I move forward. The next model is sort of this completing, this is model roadway alternative two. Sorry, the engineer called it exhibit three alternative two, just to make my life difficult. So this is the second alternative that runs through. Instead of the South Arterial stopping here and coming up, it does something that's pretty important. It connects all the way out to Butteville Road, right? We couldn't do that before because this is the UGB area we just now picked up. But this area you see down here, this is what the future should really look like for us. It means a couple of big points, Stacy Allison. It's the city's goal to turn Stacy Allison into the truck route to serve all these industrial players down here. We're trying to get them off Evergreen. Evergreen has a lot of issues. One we don't need is more trucks traveling up and down that roadway, making it more difficult. And that limits our opportunities to do improvements in here as well. Now, don't get me wrong, turning Stacy Allison into a truckway is problematic and expensive and has other issues. But we think it's a lot better to have those trucks get away from the residential areas and push them in that direction. So I can tell you on all the current applicants, applications I'm working on in this area, that's the message they've been getting. I don't have that in a plan yet, which doesn't put me on good legal grounds, but that is the plan. So that's why it's important to adopt this.
Is one of the things they're considering changing the way Stacy Allison, maybe make it go up till it meets 214? Instead of having to first turn on Evergreen and then make a 90 degree turn on this Stacy.
It is, and that's because ODOT won't let us do it. So we looked at a couple of different alternatives, Lawson, I can't stand it. Lawson's, you don't know Lawson's road behind the gas station that comes in, right? It doesn't work well. It's, it's confusing, right? But again, ODOT has one goal, that's to move traffic around this intersection and along their road fast and get people through. Not to make it easy for Woodburn residents to get back and forth, it just isn't. And that, they have a different priority than we do. We respect that. At the end of the day, we don't really have any choice. But I want to point out sort of, so this alternative is what you saw before with a few tweaks. First, we're always including some improvements. Right now we are looking for, we've already included, I'll talk about this in a second, improvements to Evergreen and Stacy. Evergreen and Hayes, because those are our two worst failing intersections. And Evergreen and Harvard, which is a smaller intersection, a little bit different, and it'll require probably a different things. Those three intersections, the city in the last six months went out and massaged our urban renewal area map to include those in our urban renewal area for the sole purpose of being able to fund those improvements so that we can make them. Those are, what you're going to notice is those are in the city's jurisdiction and we control them. If I gave you the, a map that showed you all the failing intersections in the city, you would see those three failing intersections in the city. And I think one more somewhere along Boones. And you wouldn't see any others that are within our jurisdiction that are currently failing or expected to fail. That's an interesting point. I'm not saying it's perfect, but I'm saying the failures and the snag points and the issues that the city has with our traffic are all found because everybody has to get to 214. And it backs up from 214 and it backs up on 99. It's 99, 214 to 11 that are the problems. And not to be the broken record again, but we do not control those freeways and highway systems. I can't fix a pothole out there, much less put up a light. If they, we give them the money, they're happy to spend the 20 million bucks to do the improvements. And we say, well, you're going to have to meet us halfway. So that is a constant struggle that we always fight with. But where we can make fixes on our own, we're doing that. So those three improvements I just mentioned along here are already underway and they're going to be added to this TSP. The improvements along Par Road that we acquired and kind of picked up with the Amazon piece because that's a dangerous, terrible intersection. We already acquired that. And we've accepted the fact that we're going to do some fixes out there for a short-term safety fix. And then a long-term fix that looks a lot like the one you see here. Run Stacy all the way down to the arterial. Run Evergreen all the way down to the arterial. And then this becomes a major road to bypass to get people around. Creates a problem point, or at least a new expensive fix here, here and here, but those are places we want to see them. And we think those will serve these units. Generally, that's what this complete South Arterial plan is. And I'll talk about the last one in a second. And the TSP that is drafted and proposed is generally this plan, but it has a little more detail on it. Good question.
Is it expand on what you just said then?
Yeah.
Is that par turnoff going to be removed or downsized or what's the?
So it's a, it's sort of a staged plan.
Right.
And when I think of these alternatives, one and two, this is the shorter term plan that you see up here. It's, we need to do something here. Part of that was maybe we swing it down because the problem is its proximity to the ramp and it's, et cetera. We have a different plan that we think is cheaper, that we can do some improvements here on the north side for people coming southbound. We're going to kick off a speed study to try to slow people down on Butteville. By the way, we do not have the ability to slow down any other roads in town that's outside of our jurisdiction. We're going to start a speed study and try to prove it. We're doing what we can. We want traffic to slow down on Butteville. You didn't know it's 55 mile an hour speed limit, which is insane, insane, which causes a lot of problems. So short-term, this is the plan and it still remains in the TSP as this is an interim fix. And we have money that we've thrown at this. We've already collected money and we have some plans that we're working with public works on right now for it. And it stops here because we're still a little ways from this being developed. And we, I'll talk about the arterial in a second on a big map. Time wise?
Yeah.
Which one was I talking about? The?
Like how?
Before this area gets developed?
Yeah, which I know there's.
I think it's going to happen a lot sooner than you think, but it'll be incremental, right? No one's going to grab, I assume no one's going to grab 280 acres. You know, that spec parcel, which is a pretty big, right? 500, I think, square foot redevelopment. I mean, that's just this little segment right here, right? That's just, that's just a corner. What's that?
I thought Chewie was going to go in somewhere down there.
No, we had discussions with them and they walked away. PGE owns the property over here. They may have plans. Now, just as an example of why these things were always in flux, PG moves in, there are not a lot of traffic, right? There, that's not a ton of employment. And again, even when I say someone likes the spec development, maybe they come in and have 50 workers. On the other hand, maybe it's a massive development and they bring in a lot. So those are kind of hard to predict.
Peak hour?
Shifted the other way.
Mount Hood and progress.
What's that? I'm sorry.
A pretty big, PGE has a pretty big.
Yeah, they do.
Thing there already. Are they thinking about moving?
They won't. That's a good question.
Interesting.
That is interesting. They purchased this one. So they're already, they've already purchased that land. They've said that they're either expanding or maybe have other plans. We, we're in a lot of, we're having very good conversations with them.
Another question, because I know that there's an intent to raise funds to build a, like a community center. Are those things that you have considered? Because that would be right on Evergreen as well.
Yeah. Let me get to a plan. I'll show you in a second. I think it'll pop up on one in a moment. It's important. Think I have it on here. But so the models goes through, it identifies them. This is that sort of alternative. I've jumped in. This is alternative two, right? We've done the modeling. It says, where do we have pinch points? All the ones I just mentioned, no different ones. And it, here's a, here's the, the bad news overall. Happy to give it, because this is what the engineer found. It's, what would it mean if we could get an arterial to finish along here? And the idea being you're drawing traffic to the south. You're giving people away. They can get to 99 without taking any of these smaller streets, right? Now they don't have to take Evergreen. They don't have to take Oregon Way. They don't have to jump up Stacy. They can take, come out and take Butteville. They can go all these different routes. Modeling showed not very much. You know what it showed? It showed that internally and for the city, it gives a lot of options for residents, but it wasn't alleviating the pressure at these pinch points as much. And I'm going to get to the next one because as we run through this process, oh, by the way, I, I kind of jumped ahead. We've had a, a technical advisory committee who's been working on this over time. This is the engineering team from the county, engineering team from some business groups, engineering team from ODOT. They have probably nine people who do all this work and they review all this. One of the questions we said was you're going to have to show us a, an access off I five down here.
Yeah.
And of course they laughed and said, and I said, well, we're paying for it. So run the model and figure out what it is. So we ran two models. The first model was what's called a limited access. This map, I know it looks cartoony because these maps aren't for, these maps are just to show the model. Basically we modeled what it means to have a exit ramp off I five that drops right into our arterial, okay? So northbound traffic could jump off here. In other words, no one presumably would have to come up here to get off and go on the right eastbound ramp. Even other ways it could get to probably quicker. And it also included a southbound entry. So basically this would allow people to get to Salem from Woodburn and come home from Salem out of Woodburn. Okay. So this, this gets you off and gets you southbound and let you come off to the north. That's called a limited access. We also had them run a full access that looks like gibberish. It's just what you think. It's essentially clover length he tried to demonstrate on there. I can read you the summary, but I can tell you what it says. It says that due to principally induced demand, which is a great fun topic. Engineers love to use, which means if you make a pipe bigger, more water is going to go into it, right? If you make intersections and roads easier to drive on and faster to travel from A to B, you're going to get more traffic and more people that travel from A to B. And three years later, it's going to be clogged up again, which is the classic no more freeways kind of argument. I'm not advocating either way. Induced demand is a real thing. And the models say, yeah, if you put an intersection there, you're going to draw even more people and they're going to be, start taking it more. And it had a minimal, if almost no effect long-term on these other pieces. Now, does that mean it wouldn't be better for Woodburn residents? I didn't say that. This is the big modeling picture and how it impacts intersections and improvements. And then I got a direct quote from ODOT and I told them they're going to have to come to the council meeting and say it because I only get asked once a week, can we get an interchange? You're going to have to come and say that. And he said, I'm going to tell you right now that we are not going to support an interchange, even a limited one there. And I'm happy to come to your council and say it. I said, well, we're going to keep it in our TSP as a alternative that we looked at so that in the future, maybe something will happen and you know, the tide turns and we'll at least have a plan and modeling that we've done and we've, we have those. It's been completed and it's in our TSP, but it's not our recommended one. ODOT would never support it. And again, it would mean I'd have to include these improvements somehow in my plan, which is insurmountable number. I don't even know what that would be. So we did look at it. Surprisingly, it didn't have the, the sort of overall beneficial effects I thought it would. Take the modeling for what you like on the overall system. In any case, we've gotten affirmed ODOT's not going to support it and we would never allow that to be in your TSP. And I'm going to have them come say it.
Be Amazon dissupported. That seems.
Yeah, you know who would love it? Amazon would love it. So by the way, if you look closely down here, what each of these require would be Amazon giving up the southern portion of their site for the interchange. But they might love it. You're right.
Talk about better access for them. Oh my God.
Yeah, especially if they do something else in the south. Their property ends pretty much about here. I think it's about where their site comes down. So, no, I don't want to say it's out of the question. I'm just telling you exactly what ODOT's comments are. They've given them to me and still give them to me again. So anyhow, here's what those alternatives mean to a pro. Yeah.
Supporting it is it just because, I mean, one thing is obviously within their own project, it's not going to go anywhere and no funds anyway. But either, even if it were to be funded by.
If we came up with the money and got Amazon on board and the federal government assisted, I think you could probably bend ODOT's gears. I think they're going to tell you that they already did an interchange here expansion that was significant that operates, if you go back to those level of service number, you'll see it operates very well. It's B and C sort of service. They're quite happy with that. And they're going to tell you that they just made an improvement, what, eight miles up the road or however far up, that they're putting in all the massive improvements.
Improvement. It's a mess.
All right. Those are their answers, but money answers everything, as it always does.
But you get Amazon.
Bridgeport got an interchange. How did that happen? I can tell you how it happened. They paid them a lot of money. And they said, suddenly there was room for, room for another, another interchange.
I guess the, the other thing too would be, my understanding is city could take over 99 sections, but then, you know, it becomes in agreement with ODOT, obviously that we have to maintain them.
Yep.
I'm assuming that they're obviously, because of the cost, but how feasible would that be potentially? I mean, I know Eugene has basically done that. So.
Yeah. And Portland's done it in some areas. They've taken over, I think took over 82nd Avenue.
And Powell Boulevard.
Yeah.
Taken from the state and are now under Portland jurisdiction.
I, I, I guess the short answer is I haven't looked at it closely. I can tell you my experience with them. ODOT's happy to dump every road they have, every road they have. And the reason's simple. They're all, they don't just say, here you go. They say, great. Not only do you get all the headaches and problems and maintenance issues with it, but they still are going to apply standards. They're not going to give up all that. They're still going to require you to move traffic at certain levels. They're still going to require you to adopt their access control requirements that they put into it. And it is a fortune. I can give you, I can give you a historical example in, in Westland. 43 cuts through Westland when I was the director there. 43 there is just like it is here. It's a nightmare. It's the worst road in the city. They don't take care of it. It's a complete mess. It's bumpy. It's literally the worst road in the city. The city, Westland's a lot of money. All right. And they were dealt with, so Lake Oswego took over a portion of 43 where it cuts through. It turns into A Street or it has a different name. It's not even 43. That's their portion they picked up. So Westland said, we would like to do that as well. And they spent at least a year really evaluating it and contemplating it, came up with some numbers. They did some evaluations of the roadway, what would it take to fix it to keep it up? They came up with, I think it was $24, $24 million, where the city said, if you give us $24 million, we'll take the roadway off your hand. And ODOT said, yeah, we're not giving you $24 million. We're keeping the roadway. And that was probably 12 years ago. Just to give you a basic idea, that's not nearly as long a stretch as 99. It's nowhere near as wide. That's a small two-lane rinky-dink road. That was 24 million bucks just for Westland to say, all right, we'll take it and give us 24 million so we can fix it, bring it up to our standard so that we can be responsible for the future maintenance of it. And there were still a lot of, of sort of ties to it that ODOT didn't fully release it. We dismissed it out of hand. We spent a lot of time on it. That, that's my only experience working with it. They're happy to get rid of it. Like, last thing I'm going to do is maintain more roads and bridges. But it would be a great solution. I'm not saying it's, it's, it's something that is impossible. Maybe it's segments of. This is an overall summary. I think I kind of covered them, but I want to read the last two. There are several intersections, I talked about this, that are going to have changes that require changes to the existing traffic control and configurations regardless of doing any. In other words, if you do nothing, we still need to fix Evergreen. We still need to fix Par. We still need to change the fact that we have to make changes to the west side of the roundabout and these other pieces. Some of those are reducing our costs, right? Because now we no longer have all those Smith improvements included in our plan and some are increasing them. And of course, Par Butteville is something we have to do sooner. At the end of the day, this is ultimately what it looks like in the, in the, the plan, the draft plan that you have. By the way, the plan you have is about, again, 98% final. There's numbers and a few tweaks we still have to make. But this is what it looks like. And I think it's important to understand this. This is the South Arterial that cuts through, all the way through ultimately connecting. This configuration for Stacy, turning this into a truck route, making these one, two, three improvements on Evergreen. There's still more improvements required at Par. We have sort of a phased development that's happening there. This isn't inconsistent with phasing because ultimately the goal is to phase this. But as your question was, what's the plan? It's not to run this through anymore. This will essentially be a, a, a local street that'll serve these industrial park, this industrial area. But keeping that access on Par is way too problematic. We had an accident, I want to say two months ago, again out there. It's just terrible. I can't believe how many accidents happen.
That's kind of where my mind went. It's like, if we have another opening down there, forcing the opening further down the road is much.
Temporarily, short-term, short-term is maybe a decade.
Right.
We're, we're working on this interim plan. And I know you've heard me say it a lot. It's worth repeating again. We build very few roads, very few improvements. We just don't do that. We just don't do that. That's something that happened in the forties and fifties. Federal government money is gone, right? We do not have the tax dollars to build roads and streets. We are planning on doing the Evergreen improvements with SDC money we've collected. Again, is that city money? Not really. It's money that developers paid for the extra capacity that they're putting in there. And when we talk about capacity, we always think adding lanes. It's much more usually not about adding lanes, usually about making improves in intersections to move people through, to increase the capacity of traffic that can get through them.
So are the red circles?
Yeah.
Could they be lots of different things like?
That's right.
Four-way stop or a light or a roundabout, just something.
That's exactly what they are.
Okay.
And when you go into the cost estimates, we usually break them out. It'll be, for, for example, I think on Evergreen, it'll say anything, Evergreen and Hayes will say something from 500,000 to 3 million. And you say, well, that's insane. Well, it's because a $500,000 is a light and $3 million is a roundabout. Cause we're looking really hard.
Then we have a four-way stop.
Or they do. So a light's a lot easier to get in, a lot less infrastructure to make a change to. It's not as easy as just putting up a couple masked arms. There's still a lot of utilities, et cetera, but it's a lot cheaper than a roundabout. Big picture. I love roundabouts. I think they're great. I think in general cities like to see them, but they're really hard to retrofit. You can't get them in the infield of it. It's so much right away. Acquisition is so much land and you have to, again, all the underground utilities have to be moved. That is a lot of money, every manhole, every water, every storm, some of these remains. So that, so you're going to see this range at these intersections. And some of them are interim. A good example is kind of Par. When you come into Par now, it's, it's this kind of half janky. What's going on here? It's a stop sign one way and it's straight through on Evergreen. That's actually by design. We have like a four-stage development. Because we have the northwest corner of Evergreen finished. We have the southeast portion of Evergreen and Par. Three quarters finished, but we don't have the northeast quadrant or the southwest quadrant. And the southwest quadrant wasn't even in the UGB at the time, so we couldn't touch it. So that's why it looks peculiar and it's kind of closed off. There is a long-term plan for it. That's why the improvements are, as they come in, we pick them up. And if you go into the plan, you'll see, I think I jumped ahead, that's the overall plan. Other than I think one extra piece added out here, we're staying, and it's because ODOT is forcing our hand on it. We're staying in this area to show those improvements. And again, blown up, it looks like this. If you go to the table, you'll see there's a cost for each one of these. Kind of simply this R27, like the major arterial. It sounds strange. This is actually happening. It's coming along pretty well. Right? So this segment right here, that this, this plan that you're looking at was done about the map, the base map they use is probably a year old. It's already out of date. This area that you see over here near the 23, this is Brown Street that comes down. The R7 is, we need to make improvements on Brown mostly for safety, comm stock and some other areas. We've money that we're collecting in there. But here, this white gap that you see, that's the Brown Street subdivision on the west, I'm sorry, on the east side of Brown. This is already in the city. The developer is already building R23, but I haven't had a chance to take it out of this map. And technically it hasn't been done yet because it hasn't been planted. So it hasn't been given to us. So developers building that, that's Icon building that R23, half of R23. We have to wait for the other side to come in. Or the city can pony up the money. And that's what we do. Usually we're adding on, right? To finish pieces that we think are going to take time to give us the most benefit. The next, I say, this is a, just a, a draft of the TSP. We've actually decided to segment this R29 into one, two, three phases. Because that's a better way to think of it in terms of costs and how we might allocate that for development or grants, or how we would want to spend it. So we've been making some tweaks like that.
Question with R41.
Yeah. Tell me where's that? I'm sorry.
Just right below where you had your mouse almost on.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Is there a reason we curve the roads like that? Is it just to try to get people to slow down and not just try to race through straight or?
You mean this one?
Yeah. The way it curves on.
So this is curved for two reasons. This is where the tax map, if you look at the property line, this is one property owner who owns this site. And these are different property owners who own these. And we try to align, the reason this turns here is because this is where this property bends. So we, A, try to align these with the, with the, where the property boundaries are. If for no other reason than to have the costs shared by each property. Really difficult for somebody to build both sides of an arterial. And it cuts through the middle of their property and then we have taking issues. Beware, this map is just, this doesn't mean the road is going to do that. What it means is our intention is to bend this down so we can get the maximum separation from this interchange to the north. That's why that bends down because we need our arterial to stay as far south as we can away from here. And this gap works because guess what I'm not allowed to look at? Guess what? This line, that line is our UGB. I can't go in there. I can't build a, I can't build a curb over there. I know it's frustrating. So we have to keep our arterial at least three quarters of it up on the north side until way in the future when I grab it. I mentioned that because see this property right here? I am going to get an application for an annexation for this property. When I walk into my office tomorrow morning, you'll probably see it in two, three months. No development application, just an annexation.
I think until those stuff below that line gets passed to annex.
I will not be here a very, very long time.
And that's, I'm surprised at how often it's happened since I've been.
It has.
I've only been doing this for like four years.
Yeah. Good question. So like this, this is of course Boones on this side. This property, they came in and we call, so we call this Mill Creek one. That's the Icon property. He, he, they are building this segment of the arterial. We actually have them building both sides of it. The full arterial is getting built through the middle of their property because there's no place else to put it. They built this piece. This segment, we have the northern half of that arterial built from here to here. When this property comes in and they have a subdivision application that they're coming in for their grading permit, I think tomorrow, it's going to be happening. They will have to do the whole southern half of this. Then we just wait for this last segment to finish. So conceivable that in three or four years, we'll have this segment done. Now, does that get me to 99? No. Does it get me to Beaufort? No. But this is just how these things happen. We have to pick them up over time. That's the goal. So we have that kind of segmented.
Commissioners may recall that section that Chris was just pointing to. That came in fairly recently in front of.
Yeah, this subdivision right here.
Within the last couple of months, and there was a long conversation actually about that section of the, that section of the South Arterial and where the median was going to be placed in the center of that section. So to jog your memory.
Yeah. When I, when you think, you all see these numbers, the cost of these things are astronomical. I'm trying to imagine what it's going to cost to bridge this. Right? Someone's going to have to bridge that wetland, the bottom half of Mill Creek. I can't just say to the guy building the 24 lot subdivision, guess what? You need to pony up $24 million, right? Someone's going to have to get across this railroad.
Oh my God.
Yeah, I know.
That is so expensive.
Yeah, tell me about it.
Target for everything from Seattle to LA. Well, it could impact traffic, you know?
So we are taking stabs as to what those long-term costs are. When we do these cost estimates, one of the things we do is we don't just say, great, here's, we do, actually I'll get to the, we actually have a, I'll just jump ahead of it. So here's generally, here's what it looks like when we're going to make these changes. That's the strikeout underline. You can go through the pages if you want, you know? This is a project to do fixes at Beaufort and Par. That's a quick, short-term safety improvement, right? Big, long-term, big massive improvement. What is this? Extending Stacy Allison all the way down from the South Industrial Road, which is sort of where it doesn't even end today. We're not even that far yet. We have to get to the industrial road. Then the next segment, that's 4.2 million bucks. Those are costs that will be borne principally by the development community when they come in. That's always our goal. Make development pay for it. That they're the ones who are being best served by it. And one of the things we're looking at is we're trying to figure out, how do we have them? How do we have them pay for it? You know, we have an, you've heard me talk about this. It's basically a reimbursement district we have for the interchange area. So when a project comes in who's generally in the vicinity, Amazon, the Unites Bank, the spec property, any of these properties who are near the interchange and new developments that's coming in, they not only pay our standard transportation SDC, but they have an additional SDC fee tacked on. Its sole purpose is to pay the city back for money that we fronted to help open up capacity at the interchange. I forget the number, how much money we spent there. So we fronted, the city fronted some money to ODOT to help support, get that done. And they were collecting that money, not from the general public, just from the people who benefit. We're probably going to do something similar in that industrial area. Those big employee, employers and industrials are going to be the biggest beneficiaries of those new roadways. And we don't want those costs be borne by residents. So we'll have a, we'll probably come up with some kind of similar district. Those are tricky. They don't love having those put on them, as you can imagine. But there's a lot of different ways to get there. And we typically just use that to tie into other grants and other funds that we can get. Just if you're sketching at the bottom, this number is going to change. But I think it's, I want to show you with this table and what it means. So this says, if you built everything on there, be a hundred million dollars, right? And that's a little low. We'll probably add it up. But it's actually, you know, and we're required to do that by law, but states and cities aren't stupid. We know we're not going to do all that and I can't fund all those things tomorrow. So what we do is we have these high priority costs, which these are like most important, usually shorter term, or at least maybe there's development next door that we think we can tie into and we think are going to happen. And those costs doesn't, don't mean that the city is going to pay for them. As I told you, we build almost nothing on our own, right? We tie in and developers and STCs pay for them and other, other funds are usually found for it. So most of these costs are borne by developers, but that's still a real cost. We prioritize these lists. So we assign, if you're looking at here, that new roadway Evergreen from Par to the South Arterial, that's a high priority. That's really important. We got to get Evergreen South to move traffic. And the sooner we can get them to the arterial, even if it's a segment of it, that'll really matter and help us getting it down to Par. So that's a higher priority for us. It's on a high priority list. That high priority list becomes our, what we call fiscally constrained list on our CIP. Right? That's the projects that we are tasked with building over the next, at least funding over the next six years. And we try to budget for it. Again, doesn't mean we put 24 million bucks in there. We might, but we don't expect to put those costs out of taxpayers' pocket. That's where that list comes from. That's why we prioritize. That's how the TSP turns into projects to get built and we can turn that into real cash and improvements. This isn't important. There's a lot of figures in there. Most of them aren't being changed. I steered you toward the roadway one. That's the biggest one that we're making changes to. And the biggest change here is we're changing this freight route out to Stacy Alice. That's a new improvement. That's a new change on the Stacy. Just one thing I wanted to point out. So we're going to work on some final edits. Ultimately have to come back again. It's a public hearing. We'll go through the usual legislative hearing process. We'll touch on everything. I'll go through kind of some of the individual details and projects. Again, I'll have the public works director here and ultimately the council has to adopt it. Can I have two minutes? That's pretty good. I said 90 or did I say 70 minutes? Seven minutes. I'm going to talk transportation funding.
Can I ask a question first?
Oh, of course.
So once it's all finalized and.
The TSP, yeah, it becomes part of our comprehensive plan.
How many people is the city going to put on getting stuff out there for social media? Because there is so much, there's so much crap going around and I never comment ever. But it's like, oh, the city does such a crappy job of doing the street. And in my head, I'm like, that's not our street. That's the county share. But, but when you're.
I don't have any problem with you educating folks. One of the reasons I, I try to give you all some of this, I want you to say, that's a ODOT facility.
But people are going to think, oh, they're spending all this money.
I know.
No, 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 no. We need to find a really dumbed down way of getting the word out to people who read for five seconds on Facebook or whatever.
And $100 million in transportation.
Yeah. And it's coming out of my pocket. No, no, honey. It's not, it's not. But that.
I try.
More, I mean, you need to, not, not you personally, the city.
Social media and the other element, we have, you're right.
Because it's, it's, it's acting against the city and everywhere else, of course. But so try to get some positive and real information out there in small bits that's easy for people to understand. Maybe we didn't get people to come sometimes and, and listen and ask questions. But there's, the only thing out there are the trolls. So once there's a.
Don't worry, they call me all the time.
Yeah. Well, they do. And, but we need to start not fighting back as much as educating in a very easy and small way, a lot. Many times.
Yeah. We need to do a better job. You know, we did that, I can't remember what, what Jesse called his little.
He's off.
Training. What, what did we call? Do you remember what that was called? The boot camp that we ran.
Yeah. I was thinking about the ball curve.
No.
Most people are.
Trying to get, trying to stick with the boot. So we had the, this boot camp thing and the idea behind it was 25, 24 people can come in and get a little more, like sit down and say, this is what a budget is and how it works. And we're not ripping you off. And, and I could, I could talk transportation funding for hours. Just transportation funding. I could talk for hours, much less wastewater and God forbid we get into like Scott's department and how other things and PD are paid for. That was one of those efforts. It's one of those say, let's get at least 24 people, super smart. And maybe they're having conversations and they can talk to more people. I'm happy to do more. I want to figure out more. I'll try, I'll try to get something. The Facebook does, not Facebook, the E-Bless does get a lot of hits and a lot of input. Maybe I'll put something together, try to dumb it down, but at least steer them towards something where I can give easier.
Just to say, you're not paying for this. We have a plan. We've been collecting this money all along. So it's going to make your life easier. It's not that it's going to, we're not raising your taxes for this. That's the big thing. We're not raising your.
Oh, that, we have never done that. You know, lots of cities do. They have a street tax or a street fee or whatever they call it. And that's what they're for.
But they think you do. They think that every time they have to vote on something. I, I mean, seriously, they don't even read the ballot measure. So little bits out there, it's not going to solve the problem, but it might help make less people so freaked out about stuff.
I agree.
Transportation Tuesday or tidbit Tuesday. And then when you do have these boot camps, maybe breaking it down like you're saying and putting little video bits, because obviously here you had a specific group. But then you could, or hey, if you want to get a youth kind of, you know, that can also talk.
Come on in. We're going to have snacks.
Yeah. We used to have sort of, back when I wasn't as busy. We, we talked about having, you know, brown bag, whatever you want to call it, right? Where you come in and whoever wants to show up and hear about transportation in city, come on in and I'll talk and meet with you and I'll give a 30 minute spiel and then I can answer questions. Right? And it's, and it's a shared lunch, kind of a fun, informal thing. Yeah, that kind of thing.
I've seen students here, like working more with some groups like that as well. Just because an open call is going to be a lot more difficult to build than when you're working with a specific group. And then they come because of that.
Working on.
Just, just a recommendation.
And I, I agree with.
I'm in all those groups, but mostly I just watch and go.
I'm not telling, I'm not telling you to go in and speak your mind, but.
Well, we do have some folks that do go in there and share the link for ODOT.
Yeah. And I appreciate it so much when they do. I just don't want to get in trouble by saying the wrong thing at the wrong time. So.
At least share all the good facts you can. And for what it's worth, I take every call. It's fine with me. And sorry, I never, I will never be like, I can't believe you sent that moron to me. That guy is fine. I'm happy to answer questions. I get back to everybody. I, I get to them all. I leave it this sense because it, it's a mantra, but it's, it's true. We require development as much as possible to pay their own way going forward. Not every city does that. You know, we have SDCs. You don't have to pay for all your improvements in your city. There's no requirement. It says you have to do all that and lots of cities don't. Funding, I talked about this, but I wanted to spend just a, you all, I think know this. How is funding paid for it? Like this slide in and of itself would be monumentally helpful, I think. Where does it come from? Local gas tax and franchise fee, right? That's where most of our, like where we do our maintenance and the work that we do on our transportation comes out of that. We get a cut of the gas tax that we get from the state based on our population. That money goes almost all into that. Other government sources, again, I told you, Business Oregon gave us money for this project. They help us with various things. They help us with various things. The STIP is separate, I shouldn't say gas tax. Urban oil, we've got our own refinancing. Um, again, we have this reimbursement district that again, it's not the city paying for it. It's the individual property owners benefit out of the interchange. The contributions, this is where most, I think most of the capital improvements come from. Nolan Dolan is of course the test that says, I can't just charge whatever I want. Can't make someone build me a freeway. I have to tie it to their, whatever the improvement, whatever they're building. And it's a very specific formula. But you all know that that's what happens. It's those developers who pay for it, which is really those homeowners paying for it. S D Cs comes up all the time. I'm going to cover them super fast because there's a lot of complicated things to understand about it, but you don't have to. You don't have to know everything about the methodology and how they go. I don't understand it all. It's crazy complicated about how they're, um, the methodology, about how you come up with the, with the numbers and how much you can charge and what a reimbursement component is versus the improvement dis, component. It really is complicated. I've worked on lots of them. What it is, is it's a fee only paid by new development at the time they're building permit. And it pays for capital improvements that they put in, right? It's only for capacity. Can't use it to fix potholes, can't fix it to, to, to repair sidewalks. I can't use it for any, it can't be used for staffing. I can't use it for any of those things. It's for, it's for the ink, it's for making the pipe bigger to serve their property. It's for making the road wider or extending it to their property, putting sidewalks in. It's for putting in a new bus that has to serve the people that work there. We have, we go out of our way to continually include everything we can in that. And those S D Cs, I'm going to go to the next page, I'm going to show you what they are. They don't go to maintenance replacements, but they're critical, right? We usually take S D C dollars and match them with something else to, to, to finish projects. So it's this idea of development paying its way. And what we hear mostly, the complaint from developers, your S C Cs are high and you're charging me too much and et cetera, et cetera. That's fine. Some cities do charge too much. And I had, I had a nice graphic for how that works.
What if the maintenance repairs and I can't remember the third word? What if those do increase capacity if you spend money to fix them?
If they did and we could prove it and that's, we go through this, so we just finished a parks S D, like just got approved the council, increasing our parks S D C. And we had to hire an outside consultant to go through this complicated methodology where we look at all those projects I told you about on the list. We look at level of service, how we're going to provide them. Then they go through and they, they actually evaluate, what about parks that were already built that were slightly over capacity? Right? So those have to come out of it. You can't include those. And then you include, well, that person's going to have to pay more money for that extra capacity. And they come up with this magic number. And if we can prove that we're spending the money on something like that, we can use S D C dollars for it. It's really hard. And we get audited and I can assure you, the Home Builders Association looks at every dollar that we spend in there. And they, they get notified by law about our S D C methodology and they are always very involved in it. Always fun. This is just an example. So when we, I brought this tab because it came up last Monday night at the council meeting. We have S D Cs we collect for water, wastewater, transportation, parks and storm. You're not allowed to ask for anymore in Oregon. You can't get one for schools, if you're curious. Lots of states have called, what they call impact fees. Not allowed to do that in Oregon. We're not allowed to charge S D Cs for schools. What we do have is in its construction excise tax, which is sort of a roundabout way to charge new development for their impacts on the school system. We collect that in my department and kick it out. We gave about, I want to say two million dollars or so to the school district last year, just on new improvements that happened. And that money, guess what? Can't go to teachers, can't go to school bus drivers. It goes to building new construction for new capacity because that's what the builders are paying for. That's pretty fair, right? You shouldn't make a new development pay for the fact that, you know, you didn't pay for those improvements in the road and now you're in debt and say, thank God Jerry's going to pay for all that. I've been using it forever. There's a fairness component. I think it's fine. Just to give you an idea of sort of where Woodburn fits in, you have to be careful, right? We want our S C Cs to pay as much as possible for what we, for the services that are provided. On the other hand, you don't want to be Oregon City or West Lynn.
That's fascinating.
Because all you've done is make housing in your area incredibly unaffordable.
And that's why.
Which they look in West Lynn and Lake, it's nothing makes them happier than keeping poor people out.
Fifty years ago, five years, that's why.
So it's, it's something to keep in mind. So it's not as simple as saying, great, those are the costs we apply. Our council and most cities do this. They say, that's too much money. Right? That might be a great dream to have, uh, five aquatic centers. So we'll just throw the parks S D C and we'll make it an S D C of a hundred fifty thousand dollars a home. Problem solved. Well, it doesn't work that way, right? You need to be aware of sort of what happens in your area. Kaiser's is very low. There's a lot of reasons why some of these are high and low and each one has its own reason for being high and low. We can talk about it. But in general, when you hear it's expensive to build in Woodburn, we can tell them to suck an egg. It's not expensive to build in Woodburn. It's very fair. And since I've been here eight years, I have been here, we've increased the water, transportation and parks S D Cs. So when I started here, it was closer to like fourteen thousand dollars. It has gone up a lot. Frankly, it should have been higher. Unless you see development slowing down because we're really expensive. And I'm not seeing that. I think our, I think we're, I think we're, costs are pretty, pretty accurate, pretty close. Or we're going to be doing some more. I just think it's, it was kind of a fun fact people always like to see. Yeah. Here's my last fun fact, then I'm really done. Because I love ripping on West Lynn, favorite thing. I hope they're watching. I always tell them to watch me because I rip them every night.
Is that sliding here somewhere? I don't remember seeing it when I was looking at.
This slide? Oh, I don't, this, no, this is just something I talked about it by S D C. I'm happy to share with you. So the first page of West Lynn's comprehensive plan has a little set of like ten, I don't know what they call them, goals? They gave them some fake name. The comprehensive plan is like your legal document. It's even, it's even more, I guess, I don't know what the right legal phrase is. You're more legally bound to the requirements in your comprehensive plan than my zoning code. It is a real document. So the number one, when I was there, the number one goal in there was to quote, have the highest S D Cs in the state. Didn't ask about transportation, parks, living. Nope. That was the number one goal for the city and their highest ranking document was.
Where do you live?
Our goal is to have the highest, I live right off Bridgeport.
In Oregon City. So, yeah.
We want to have, so every time, every time another city raises theirs, their staff goes in and raises their S D C. It's insane. Anyhow, I thought it was a fun fact.
Yep.
I have a lot of thoughts on that. That's all right.
Yeah. In that district for thirty years.
That was all I had. That's not too bad. Thought I did it right. Hope it wasn't too dull. I, I appreciate you all coming in. It was a, let me save that because I got it saved in there.
I'm very excited about some of the changes that are going to be made, even though they're not tomorrow. It's going to help. It's going to help everywhere, especially in that Southwest.
It will. If you want to know some tomorrow changes, the immediate things are we're going to, in the next twelve months, I expect to see two, at least two improvements starting on Evergreen. We actually went out and, and got bids for about two hundred eighty thousand dollars to do the design and construction for those three improvements on Evergreen. We've already done it. We, that, that, that engineer's working on it. I expect that to be done around the spring, since we would go out to bid on those. Probably going to be signals because they're a lot, lot cheaper, much as I like roundabouts. But anyhow, that, and that will help a lot.
It will save lives. It's, those are dangerous intersections. People are nuts.
They are. And Par Roads, the other place, the, the short-term changes there. It's so weird, like they put the little flashing stop sign, if you ever see what goes in there. I think it's fantastic. It looks like, I mean, it's, it's one of these like five hundred dollar solutions. You're like, well, that's pretty good. Because it sounds weird, but a lot of people go west on Par and they just go over the ramp and they just keep trucking. Maybe a flashing light that says stop will kind of get, maybe get one of them's attention. Maybe it'll be.
Added blue to it, I think it would have been more.
Just a little, little flashing.
And maybe spin it.
That was it.
The construction up, going up the ramp to the high school, how is that looking? Because school's almost.
Open now.
Ready and.
It will be, yeah. So I think though, there's some additional work being done on the actual bridge that won't be finished. But the crosswalk and the intersection will be where the little.
The barriers are all down.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. It's, it's supposed to be, supposed to be finished. It'll be, it's supposed to be lit. It's supposed to have a little refuge in the middle and have the crosswalk in the center, et cetera. That's supposed to be done. Again, good example of where'd we get that from? Got a lot of that money from the state. So it happens when you know fatality, people start throwing money at things. We were able to spend a lot of our S D C dollars on that. Good use of money. I think it was S D C dollars. Pretty sure it was.
The reconstruction we did, we, we voted for, for Yaphomah Valley, the Salud. It is so nice. I know it's not still not quite done, but oh my gosh, it is so much nicer for people going in and out of there. And for everybody else going by it makes it a heck of a lot easier. And the flashing sidewalk thing, I love that. I think we need more of those and not everywhere, but it gets your attention.
Last word.
It'll stop. And before.
I got one of the.
Yeah. It was, it was, I was really afraid for patients that are going across the road there, they were just going to get run over.
It gets a lot of use, a lot of use.
Yeah.
Yep, I got one today, as a matter of fact. I just told an app developer that he was going to be doing one. The one I had this morning that I'm not talking about. Which is good, good. We like those P D. They're actually not as expensive as you might think. You know who doesn't like them? ODOT.
Yeah.
I can say that because they're not.
Well, and they're on demand, so if you don't need it, you don't have to worry about it.
That's why it's not a full stoplight.
So we, that's right. So we, we're, we're actually working on a plan. I throw ODOT under the bus. There's, there's a lot of divisions in ODOT. I, I should throw some divisions under the, under the bus and not others. Because there's a lot of great people up there who, who weave through the bureaucracy and I love them. There's a, there's a woman that we're working with, or Nada's working with. I can't remember her name, I'll call her out every time I can. She is working on a project on ninety-nine to get us pedestrian crossings and to put in sidewalks there. And she is carving through ODOT red tape like no one I've ever seen.
Jenna, I believe.